...college order, and I will stand and say the... ...legislative... ...legislative. The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Followed by roll call, and Gary Roth, the chairman, is not here. Anthony Grass?
Here.
Shaun Ozerig is absent. Justin Donovan?
Here.
Ramdi Rosita?
Here.
Kathy Walz?
Here.
Jeff Ideman is absent, and Alkerman Prince?
Yeah.
Is present. The, um, you distributed the package, and contained therein was a agenda, and in order for us to follow this, we will need for a motion to approve it.
Motion to approve.
But Walz says approving it.
Second.
And Prince says second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Also was distributed the May 5th, 2014 meetings, and with the exception of correcting the spelling of Justin's name, are there any other amendments or corrections that you see?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Prince?
Second.
Second by Grass. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You will recall that the next order of business is the introduction of evidence, and the evidence is the adopted city ordinances, including the land use plan and the comprehensive plan for the city of St. Genevieve, subject to a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
Second. Donovan? Okay. Now we have an item for citizen input for any issue not related to the items on the agenda. So if there's anyone who wants to say anything about planning and zoning, that would probably need Alicia's only one. If you're here to comment on one of the agenda items, then please wait until that item is addressed. The first order of new business is the request for a special use permit to Chomet Inc. for the use of 351 St. Mary's Road to operate a hospitality center for wine tasting and sales, the use of the Beckett-Rabo House as a museum for tours, and the East Barn as an open-air pavilion. This, you know, you know that a lot of things have been going on there, and we've issued permits for the things that are occurring, and it kind of occurred after the fact that there was the question about whether it was properly zoned. So this is kind of a housekeeping amendment to do two things. One is allow Mr. Johnson to explain to you what his master plan is, and two, to see if there are any concerns about this proposed use that might be addressed by some special conditions. So, without further ado, Hank Johnson will step forward, identify himself, notwithstanding the fact I just did, and talk about his project.
My connection with the Beckett-Rabo House goes back to about 1988. That's a couple of years before we bought our property here, and it was a case of seeing that house for the first time and feeling that it's just the quintessential French colonial house of all of St. Genevieve. I was struck by it immediately, and I wondered why it wasn't open to the public. And so anyway, I later found out what the story was, and so in the fall of 2013, we had an opportunity to buy the property from the surviving spouse of the person that really was, I think, probably the instigator of the development of the house. It was owned by something called the Charonne Institute, and you all may remember, some of you donned a Charonne. Her husband, Bill, was the person that I dealt with on the purchase of the property. So if you've had occasion to drive by there, you see that it has a new roof, and that the exterior of the building has been buselaged and then whitewashed, that the perimeter has been redone, not completely. We haven't had to replace all the boards and the porch, but quite a few have been. All the structure's been strengthened. We had carpenters in there for a good week or so, just doing invisible strengthening of the structure of the building. We had a local person that worked in there for many months, preparing the buselage and the surface and so forth. Anyway, the house is finished. The historic house is finished now, and I've been buying primitive antiques to furnish it. We're going to be displaying about somewhere in the 1840s as our date of what people will see when they go into the house. Also on the grounds was the chicken coop, which was in pretty terrible shape, and so it is that building that we're going to be using as a hospitality center. So the building is about 660 square feet. It's going to have a place to sell tickets for the tours in the house, and also a tasting bar for Chomet. We're in the vineyard and winery business at Chomet. Perhaps some of you have been out there. We're also in the hospitality business, and we have luxury villas and a restaurant and a number of different businesses we operate there. So my idea is this facility is going to be an introduction to Chomet, as well as a place for people to sit and relax and enjoy themselves, learn about our wines, and to also learn more about the history of the house. We've put together a timeline for this house, its most interesting story. For those of you that don't know, just very briefly, the house was built around 1808. That was a dentocrinology conclusion. It was done by the University of Missouri folks that do that work. We think maybe it's the second house on that site, because there's also reference to people being there on the property as early as 1774. So that's, that part is kind of a little foggy. The Beckets lived in the house until sometime in the late 1830s. Mr. Beckett died in 1836. His wife lived for a while after that, and then she passed away, and the children were parceled out to the town. And in 1840, then, there was an auction of the property to settle the estate. It was purchased by a free black man named Antoine Recolle, who two months later sold it to a free black woman named Clarice, who had been a slave in the Janice family, which was the occupied Green Tree Tavern. She lived there until she died at age 90, so that was in the, in about middle 1880s. Her son and his wife and their children lived there then with her from about 1860 on. The last one that lived in the house, his name was Alonso Rebo, he lived in the house until 1969. And it's just an extraordinary story that this family would occupy it for this period of time. Anyway, some of you may remember a priest by the name of Jerry Kleba, who was here for some years in the late 60s. He's a close friend of mine, and I was telling him the story, and when I got to that last part, his mouth fell open. He said, "I had his funeral." So he knew, my friend knew the Alonso Rebo, and he said he used to take sacrament there on weekends when one of the two brothers was ill. Anyway, it's been a, it's been a really fun endeavor, learning this history and learning about how we're going to present this history as part of the museum experience. So we see people coming in, going through the museum, getting the story from all of the things, the timeline that we're going to have in the hospitality center. This timeline is going to be 30 inches wide and 19 feet long, and a local person you may know, Mark Greither, is building the fixture for me right now that will hold this timeline. Chris Noor's company is going to be the, people that printed the, will print it for me. So we see people coming in and getting the story, enjoying the, learning about the history, going through the building, and then coming back and relaxing and having a glass of wine, perhaps, and getting to know Chomet. We're going to have a section that introduces the public to Chomet. We'll have a television with a loop showing pictures of our place and inviting people to come out. So that in a nutshell is where we are, what we're doing, and what our plans are. I'd be delighted to answer any questions.
Gets to the use of the land, and you already explained the use of the, what's, it's identified on your site plan as the shed. That was the chicken coop?
Was the chicken coop, yeah.
You also had plans for the use of the barn?
At some point. At some point, my thought is that we'll get a structural engineer to go in there and go over everything and make any recommendations for making sure the building is sound. I believe it's going to make sense to pour a concrete floor in there, and it'll be just kind of an open-air place in the summertime for people to sit down, enjoy themselves, have a glass of wine, out in the sun.
And then the other structures that are identified in your site plan either aren't suitable for occupancy, or you haven't identified what your usage is?
Well, this third building, which is identified as the corn crib or some such.
Corn crib and the Duran House.
And then the Duran House is, my idea for that, and this is not going to occur for probably until next year, I have the Habs drawing of the original building, which was two rooms side by side. There's a guy named Jesse Francis, who was working on the original rehab of the Beckett-Rabo House when the Duran House arrived. It was moved from another location, you may know that. Anyway, he told me that the second room was so deteriorated, the logs were so deteriorated, that it couldn't be rebuilt, and so they just chucked those in the barn building. And when I first got there, I thought, what in the world are these hand-hewn beams doing in this building? And there were just a few of them, and they're still there. So we hope to use those as, we make a porch on the front, we replicate what the original building looked like in half, just the half that's standing there now. Have the same front porch, and my hope is to take the siding that's on there off, so the skeleton of the building is exposed, so that people can go in and look around at the joinery of how it was built. So it'll be kind of like that great model in the Amaro House, only in real life.
It behooves us to go ahead and, for the record, talk about all of the uses.
Sure.
And if you change later, we can always amend it.
Sure, sure. So the Duran House would be an additional museum, and the corn crib, storage. There's lumber stored in there now, and I do, there'll be other things that we'll want to store in there.
Anyone have questions?
I have to share in the same concern as the police chief regarding the parking. Is there, do you have a plan to potentially expand the parking as you open up like the barn and that stuff for the open-air pavilion?
I don't know of how that will work. I mean, we've got room for six, seven parking, well, it's eight, eight parking places, actually. Let me tell you about the handicap parking pad. I have a friend, Aaron Thuritt, who's with the Earthworks people, he's the son of Kevin Thuritt, and he had a tragic motorcycle accident when he was 18 years old. He's been, you know, Aaron, by chance, you're nodding, but, okay. Anyway, he has this very interesting device on the back of his truck. He keeps a wheelchair in the bed of the truck, and this arm that is controlled by a remote control, goes to picks the chair up, comes out, brings it over, and puts it down right outside his door, and he's, he then can maneuver into the chair, go on his way, and when he comes back, he's able to pull himself back up into the cab and pushes another button, and the crane comes around again and picks the chair up and comes back like this. So I called him up, and I said, "How many feet do you need to operate your device?" If you were going to, and I told him what we were doing, that we were going to be pouring an additional pad there so that, well, for one thing, so he can come over, he's my friend. And so he's the one that gave me the dimensions of that pad. He said, "If you make it that size, be a piece of cake for me and for anybody." So 15 by 20.
Now, I need to point out that the parking exceeds the rated occupancy of the building. He would only need six, with one of them being handicapped. So he's got more than the zoning order requires of him for, to occupy a building of that size.
And the lot's just going to be gravel?
Gravel.
Mm-hmm. The pad, of course, the handicap pad. Right, that'll be paved, yeah.
Okay. Hearing any other questions, or is there another citizen who would like to come in?
No, I just own the property next to it, so I kind of wanted to get it. Pam couldn't tell me on the phone today. Are you Martin?
I am Martin.
Okay. She was talking to Jimmy, and Jimmy didn't know exactly, he didn't tell me it was going to be gravel. So that was just my concern, because I actually own the property on the other side of the easement that's backed up to his property. So I want to make sure like my trees weren't going to be cut down, or weren't going to be, you know, that was, I have four kids, so that was my concern. And my husband went over and talked to him. I am okay with this, because to me, that place was like this dead, you know, and to me, this is kind of bringing something in there where something's going to get done, and it's not just sitting there.
Certainly adding value to its, and the surrounding properties.
Yeah, I mean, I got, you know, I got Terrasite Mobile Homework behind me, which, you know, is a sore sight to see. So hopefully, I'll buy that house, and, you know, hey, we might won't have to move. You know, I mean, I, as a citizen, and I have children, teenagers and babies, I think this is a good thing for the community, because it's not sitting there. It's a part of the town, it tells about our town, it tells about our people who live there, and he's doing something with it where nobody else did. It's said there six years.
That's an important statement, because the reason for these hearings is so that affected property owners.
It's going to bring jobs to the community, it's going to bring more people down here. The more things that, I own a shop here, and the more things that people own here, and the more things that be open, the more people's going to come, just like with St. Charles or Kinswick. You know, if they only have four or five shops, you're not going to get a lot of tourists, where if you have 20 or 50 shops, you will.
So for somebody who wasn't going to say anything, now you're going to have, identify yourself for the record.
I'm Jennifer Schmidt, and I live literally right next door at 355 St. Mary's Road, so I am his neighbor. And I have seen him over there working nonstop, you know, and I've seen him for the, I mean, I've seen where that place has been and where it's come. So I've seen the inside and outside, have not yet seen the bar completed yet, because I just don't have time right, you know my husband?
I do.
Landscaping company, so four kids, landscaping.
He keeps you busy.
Well, you know, you've seen me out there, so you know that. But that was my concern. I was just curious of where the parking lot was going, because it was not described in the letter that was sent Friday. So when I called Pam, Jimmy didn't know, Pam didn't know, and he wasn't here, so that was why I came.
That being said, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
First by Walz, second by Prince. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
The second item on tonight's agenda is a request by the St. Genevieve Special Road District for a special use permit at 1023 North Main Street, which is their existing storage facility, and the, it's to expand one of those buildings to store highway road vehicles, equipment, and materials, namely salt, for the roads. And Neil Nager is here tonight. Do you want to say anything?
I'm just going to answer questions.
Stand up, so they can answer questions. Identify yourselves.
Me and Nager, Special Road District. Any questions?
Well, this isn't necessarily a question for you. I just got a question of why we're even discussing this.
Say, because whenever, I don't know why it happened this way, but the Special Road District was given a permit by the city to build that facility on that site in R1 Zone District.
But several years ago, we went through and identified a bunch of properties that weren't zoned properly and fixed them. Why did this one get messed? Why is it even still a residential property? It hasn't been residential since I was a little kid.
But in order to give them the building permit, which is what he first came in to get, we had to reference the zone district, and it wasn't, however long ago that happens, it didn't get changed.
Shouldn't, or can we both?
Well, if you give them a special use permit, we issue the building permit.
Well, I know, but this, if we get it zoned the way it's supposed to be, then he doesn't have to go do this every time they want to do something.
Yeah, that's more problematic. There is a general.
Because he's grandfathered, aren't they?
Maybe. There's a, there's a general prohibition against spot zoning. So you can't just take a piece of property in the middle of a residential zone district and say, "Okay, I want that to be industrial." So rather than spot zone, which would be unwise, and I would advise against it, the special use permit allows the operation of a facility that is otherwise inconsistent with the zone district, and it's really the only way you can do that. You could rezone it, but it would be subject to challenge.
What's the railroad building next door? What's that zoned as?
I didn't look at it, but I assume it's the same thing.
That that's residential also?
I don't know. Stand by, but look at it.
Really?
At one point, was that not in the city limits? Was that annexed at some point after the adoption of planning of zoning? Okay.
Not that anywhere.
Because in, under the St. Genevieve rules, when property is annexed, it comes in as R1. So we have a number of what would be considered lawfully non-conforming uses, and I say lawfully non-conforming because whenever you zone or change a zone district, the person who is there has the right to continue their operation. Now, they can't expand the non-conformity, but they, you don't make them stop either. So we have a number of commercial enterprises in the city that are operating in residential zone districts. Now, if they cease operation for two years, then they don't get to come back and start up again.
Without special use?
Well, that would probably require a re-zoning at that point. Special use is our only tool to address changes on sites where you otherwise have a non-conforming use. Yes.
What roads do you maintain in Ward 1?
I'm sorry, I honestly don't know. Ward 1 being up City Parker.
Where your building is in that area.
Namely, I can't name them off, I'm sorry. But around the park area up there.
Do you maintain anything as a special road district road that is not the fairgrounds right there?
Yes, we maintain the roads beyond the park, to the north side of it.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
To the north side of the park, I think it's.
Outside the city limits?
Yes.
You don't maintain any roads in the city limits?
No, we not, no.
Not to belabor it, but one more question. Where is, what are your boundaries of Special Road District 8?
Anything exceeding city limits to, I believe, seven, five miles, originating five miles beyond. One end of the road being, our roads continue further out than that, but if the closer end is within five miles.
In bad weather like we had last year?
Yes.
Do you share resources with the city street department?
We have plows, no. We do not share supplies, I guess.
So the city can't go there and get salt, for example, in a blizzard?
The city owns their own, they have their own pile of salt. If in an emergency case, I'm sure we could work something out.
But as a rule, there's not any kind of reciprocity?
No.
So the city doesn't benefit in any way from your road shed being within the city limits?
No, no.
But not specifically to that point, but there is a history of, at least since I've been here, the Special Road District, the county, and the city cooperating on projects.
I understand that.
Not snowmobbing necessarily, but.
I have to say, and I'm voicing my opinion, this is not a question. I think your site is an eyesore, and when you consider the ferry landing as one of the points of entry to our historic town, coming along right before you get to Frank Meyer's beautifully restored house, and seeing piles of rock covered with a torp weighted down with rocks, I find to be an eyesore. And in a perfect world, you'd have your building located in Special Road District 8, in my mind.
The hopes with this storage is to move that pile of rock and salt inside, and therefore decreasing the eyesore, making it a little bit more friendly.
Your application only says salt.
Only says salt.
Would be stored inside, it doesn't say rock.
There is rock, there's, eight, our half-inch rock is mixed with the salt to extend our coverage. That is a salt pile, but it's got some rock with it. That's, it's not road rock there, that is our winter salt supply under that torp.
You have a question?
Neil, the concern, I, on my way here, I went by there, because I live up there, but a young guy was there, his mother lives right there, and he was concerned if you come, are you extending this building for? And he was concerned if you come, are you extending this building toward Mrs. Foff's house?
Yes, that's...
His concern was where are you going to put the fuel tank?
It's going to have to be moved over to the front of this, away from their property. There's some utility poles out there...
Right.
In the center of the lot, we had planned to put a barrier, a reservoir there and pour concrete and put it there.
That would be very close to her property.
No, it's going to be moved away from there altogether.
And his children around.
Yeah, yeah.
So this is just an add-on to the existing building? Is it going to be L-shaped then?
No, it's going to be added on to the end of it. The, it's to the west.
West end?
That'll fit on there?
Pardon?
I was up there a while ago, I was wondering, do you...
It sure doesn't look like it, does it?
There, actually, there's a road that runs.
There's a, yeah, there's a road, a driveway there. It's going to be on that driveway.
But it follows, according to the report here, if everything's within the...
Within the legal setbacks and all of that?
Yes.
Has that homeowner voiced any concerns to our knowledge?
No, we didn't receive any.
And they were notified?
Yes, all adjacent property owners were notified.
I talked to, I don't know who you were referencing now. I talked to Mrs. Foff today over there. Met her there in the yard and talked to her, told her...
Yes, I was.
Yeah, okay. Told her what our plans were and she asked about the trees and assured her that we weren't going to do anything with her trees. And we got them in mind.
Make a motion to follow staff recommendation and approve?
Second.
No, Justin.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes.
Okay. So majority rule? Special use permit will be issued. The special use permit will be issued.
Okay, thank you.
There is no further business for me unless you have something you want to talk about.
No. Motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?